Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining the South Fulton Coalition for our second event of the evening. Tonight, we are pleased to have Dr. Joy Treadwell, who will be, uh, who is a candidate for District Two City Council, uh, for the city of South Fulton. She, if elected, she will be the second person to hold that seat. Uh, we will be hosted, I'm sorry, we will be joined also by Patricia Wise, who is a resident of District Seven. She will be our moderator for, for this evening. So I, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to you, Ms. Wise. You have the floor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hey, welcome, everybody, and good evening. We're gonna get this started right now. Um, I want to introduce Dr. Joy Treadwell. She is running for District Two seat. And Ms. Dr. Treadwell, would you like to give us just an introduction of where you are? Who you are, how you're coming, and why you want this seat?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, first and foremost, uh, I want to thank y'all for hanging for the eight thirty slot. I know it's evening tonight, and to those who are watching the recording, I just appreciate you being civically engaged. And so, an incredible thank you also to the team who's putting this together, because I know that, uh, in this day and age, virtual is the way that we reach the people. So, thank you for that. Um, so I'm Dr. Joy Treadwell. Uh, those who know me affectionately call me Dr. J. I am in no means that tall, um, but it is just my nickname that I sometimes go by. I will share with you all that I'm a resident of South Fulton and have been for several years. Um, my, I'm an educator by trade. I am also a leader and also lead a current educational industry business, a consulting firm, that is based, um, out of San Francisco, but serves students all over the country. Um, and so I've had twenty years of strategic leadership, both in the education sector and as well as the policy sector around education. So, a part of the reason why I'm looking, uh, to run for city council, while I'm running for city council, is really because there are so many opportunities, both from a policy perspective, but also, uh, from a personal relationship building perspective, that I'm interested in shaping for our district and our city. I think most importantly for me, uh, District Two represents home. Um, I tell people, I chose South Fulton to be my forever home, and that deliberate choice means that I've gotta work, uh, to improve it and make it better. And so for me, this is my opportunity to be civically engaged in the place that I have chosen to be my forever home. Um, and so that's why I'm running.
Thank you so much for that. With that being said, um, the city has definitely gone through some turmoil, and we're gonna get all into all that tonight, I'm sure, because there's gonna be hundreds of questions. And we want your feedback, so we can understand where you place and where you'll be positioned in that overall scheme of things when you decide to move things forward. We understand forward is the next thing to go. But, um, what grade would you give the current city as a whole? If you were to greatest and give us our report card?
Now, see, asking an educator that question is, uh, right on target. Um, I would definitely say right now, I'm giving the, I'm giving the city of South Fulton a C minus. And the reason I'm giving it a C minus is for a couple of reasons. Um, when I think about the number of residents who are not engaged in our city, um, and not even just civically engaged in our city, but whether it's event attendance, whether it's community events, uh, that to me is an indication of a healthy city. If I was to relate this to, uh, my classroom experience, I'm not leaving any kids behind. Uh, I'm working to make sure I'm reaching every resident, and that's just not something that we're doing right now. Um, I feel like we have an opportunity to really pull our seven districts together in a way that doesn't, um, self-promote or isolate individual districts. And so for me, I would give it a C minus. In addition to some of the leadership challenges that we've had, some of the transparency challenges that we have, um, I also think as we serve, which is what our primary purpose and mission is to do, is to serve our residents, um, I feel like if they were to greatest, that's probably where they would fall, depending upon who you ask and where they fall in our amazing city. And so for me, I think it's about how do we make sure that, um, you know, fifteen percent of our citizens are not making decisions for a district that is a hundred and ten thousand, and that we are all experiencing a city that people want to be engaged. Um, that for me is, it would be a grade A. A grade A is where our people feel connected to the city. They're attending events, they're attending, uh, city council meetings, they're actively engaged in their voting, and their overall desire and pride in this city is something that, um, we see, not only just in social media, but also in the way they speak about our city. And right now, I just feel like none of that, um, is ringing true.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, I have another, I, I've got some hot topics, so, um, my little pet peeves. Um, we, the city initiated a sanitation tax that really bamboozled the city. Uh, um, I felt bamboozled, hoodwinked, gaslit, manipulated. And even, even after the sanitation tax, um, my bill went up, I think it was sixty to seventy dollars. So I wasn't happy at all. And a lot of residents are really feeling stuck by the, uh, the whole process. And it, um, we're due, from what I understand, we're due, we're gonna get a raise, um, it's gonna increase next year. And as, um, our city manager said, this, we are currently operating in a deficit. So where are you at? Because we all want to know, because not only you're gonna be making decisions for District Two, but you're also gonna be making, you know, decisions for the whole city. Where are you at come next year, when you're on that seat? When we're standing in public comments and we want to know, do we want to move forward with this? Or do we want to let this whole sanitation ta- tax go?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. I think there are a number of things that we have to look at, and I, I know that it is always in regards to how much are we taxing, or how much are residents actually able to afford living in South Fulton? And whether it's a T-Splat, whether it's a sanitation tax, whether it's your property taxes, all of those have an indication on what I call the bottom line or the money in my pocket. One of the things that we also have to be, uh, consistent about for me is, what are we also getting for our dollar? Like, the idea that I have to drive to Merc to recycle, and I have a sanitation tax, right? Doesn't feel like it's serving residents. And so for me, it would be about interrogating, like, look, if we're not getting what we need to get for the reasons that we need to get it, with the vendors that we need to get it, is it really purposeful and is it actually helping our bottom line? I think that there is a true sense and a need for South Fulton to remain attractive to residents is we can see, like, people are buying houses less and less. This next generation is not interested in a forty-year mortgage. And if we're gonna be a city that's gonna be able to compete with the neighbors next door to us, we have to make sure that we're affordable. But we also need to make sure we're providing the services that people desire in ways that we also can afford. And so for me, I am, I want to make sure that people's, uh, pockets are impacted in a way that allow them to live in South Fulton. When I first moved here, um, it was pre-long before COVID, and I just remember thinking about every time I saw a for sale sign up in my neighborhood, and I would talk to neighbors, and they're like, we just can't afford it. That shouldn't be our story. Um, we should be a city, especially that is focused on affordability, but also has an opportunity to say, like, if you're paying this tax, residents can see the benefit of the money that they're spending.
Right, right. I, I agree. I mean, if, if, if all the services that were said that were going to be used for it, um, like, uh, street sweeping and, you know, Merc and all that, um, then I could see it, but I still don't see the cost, the tax, um, the amount. I, I'm just, I'm still, I mean, look, you're just picking up trash. I get it, we need trucks and everything like that, but, um, but hopefully, when it's addressed next year, um, you'll be able to have some new eyes and, and, and fresh teeth to kind of bite in on it. Um, the mill cap stuck a lot of people, okay? Um, I'm not one to be bamboozled or hoodwinked, okay? I can read the charter and, and the twists and the turns and the curve that the city took to try to get this to be a comprehensive plan. Oh, we need this for the new projects that are coming out, this ninety-three million dollar, uh, thing. And I think what we're beginning to see and what we've have been feeling the last eight years is this lack of transparency, the lack of trust, and this sense of being snowballed, side, you know? Where are you at? I understand, we, we've talked about the mill cap, it's a done deal, it's not gonna get raised, and I think we should always fight about it, but when you speak about being a service to the, to your citizens and then the city as a whole, you better best understand that, like, I, I think another candidate said, we are not stupid. We can read, we're a smarter, we're, we're not like grandma and granddad, and I'm sixty-two, so, um, we're not, you know, you know, we're just, I'm not, I'm not worried about it, you know, I, I'm gonna live here until I, you know, till my lights are out. But no, we need to, we need to engage, like you said. Where are you at with this whole perception, um, of what the city is doing to try to do these things and not be very intact, you know, have the integrity and the transparency? I mean, we gotta really look at it.
Yeah, so, uh, one of the things, so part of what I do is I serve as an executive coach to school leaders and superintendents. And one of the things I always say is that trust is broken in a single moment, but it is built over a kilometer of time. So the idea that we have broken trust in this city and expect for residents to just go, oh, forget that, we're moving on, um, is actually not how trust is rebuilt. And so for me, a huge part of this level of transparency and this, um, accountability that we are not saying is actually a leadership integrity issue. And there are two types of leaders, those that have integrity and those that don't. And so if I am transparent, if I am operating from a place of accountability, I don't have to twist myself in a pretzel to bring people along. You might not agree with me, but you understand my rationale, you understand where we're coming from, you understand the benefits, the pros, the cons, et cetera, but I don't have to manipulate, uh, the storyline to try to bring people along. And so for me, I think there are two things that, um, I appreciate about what you said, our residents are brilliant. So we know when we're being bamboozled, and we also got way more resources than my mother did in the sixties. So even if I think I'm being bamboozled, I got a quick Google search, a quick question to chat B, Chat GPT to figure out where do I really want to stand on this? And so I think there's an opportunity for us as we think about our city, A, to be more transparent about our finances, making sure that we're showing line item budgets by department. Yeah, that's a high level of accountability, but when you've got broken trust, you've gotta go to the furthest extreme to rebuild that trust. The second part that I would say is we, uh, start to really talk about what it means to be transparent. That's not just saying the things. We also have to be tracking towards clear metrics. Um, I'll use an example in the strategic plan. We talk about our land use, we talk about we want to, uh, build more parks, but we don't have any real metrics, by when, where do we want to build them, how long is it gonna take, who is it gonna serve, what's the purpose, and then what's our path there? Are we talking three years, five years, one year? Like, where do we want to be along the way, and what's our percentage of that? I think we've got an opportunity to be really granular and micro in our approach to building more trust with residents versus kind of what I would call the fifty-thousand-foot approach, where we just expect for people to fly the plane and trust that there's gonna be no turbulence. That's actually not how you build trust back with your residents. You've got to show the smaller milestones over time and then hold yourself accountable for when you miss them. And simply just say, I tell my leaders all the time, I'm sorry goes a long way, y'all. I think that there's an opportunity for leaders to operate from a place of integrity when we haven't or we don't make the decisions that are in the best interest, and that's just the price of leadership.
Hmm, great, great answer. And thank you for that, because it, it is important to us. You know, we choose you guys as leaders, and we, we expect leadership, we expect integrity, and, um, and all that other good stuff that comes from the top. I got like two more questions, and we're gonna open up to the floor.
Absolutely.
Um, I've been watching these podcasts ever since they began, and one of the things that I needed to do some research on was impact fees. So I'm not sure if you're familiar, but I'm gonna just write, read a couple of things. Impact fees are charged on new development to fund capital improvements and fit facility expansions such as roads, schools, water systems, parks. In Georgia, the Development Impact Fee Act of nineteen ninety governs these fees, requiring that they be proportionate to the share of costs for public facilities and be calculated based on the service areas and the adoption of those services. Currently, the city of South Fulton is in the process of developing its impact fee ordinance, having recently completed an impact fee study to determine appropriate fee levels as they're outlined in the, uh, like, the Impact Fee Act, and, and identify required public improvements. I have a couple of questions for you. Why now? Why was this not done eight years ago? We've had improvements, we've had people come in, and from what I've learned, that impact fees are, um, they're, they're, they're given to us during the permitting process, permitting process, not after. And they're not, and they're not for cleanup, and oh, they messed up this road, and they messed up, although we should have people in place to say, hey, developer, you just, you just gave us a twenty-ditch, twenty-inch hole in, you know, in the concrete, whatever. But, um, you're, my question is, one, where are we gonna go with this moving forward, um, Dr. Joy? And why hasn't it been taken care of eight years ago? Seven years, six years ago?
Yeah, so I think there are two things. Um, I think that this city count, current city council is, oh, very much aware that between the cost of tariffs and the cost of inflation, things are going to get every, very expensive very quickly. I also think that this is an oper- uh, it, it, it's a reflective of a need that they're anticipating. We anticipate that things are gonna be more expensive, we need to find out where we can get all of the money from. To answer your question about why it wasn't done sooner, I think there's a nuance. Um, and as someone who has opened a school from the ground up, uh, we didn't start from scratch. We looked at who had other high-performing schools and what were the things that they were doing. And I just think that, uh, we missed the marker to do that. Um, there are things that, yes, are unique to South Fulton, that we need to build for our own sake, but there are also good plays in the playbook. I'm also a Falcons fan, and I do a lot of football analogies, but there are good plays in the playbook. So if we're going to run the play, we look and see what some of the other teams and other cities and other municipalities are doing, and then determine what is best suited for you. What I, I will say, though, is this is hard work. Opening that school was hard work. It wasn't just about the, the grit that you had to have on the day-to-day, it was about the research that you need to make to make sure that you're making the best decisions, and that is a full-time job. Making sure you are aware enough to know what's happening in other cities, what's happening in other states, what do these regional reports even mean, and how can we shape it? And so for me, I think the impact fees are a no-brainer. I am also aware that many of these developers are coming to South Fulton with heavy interest. Um, and it's important for us that they understand that if you're gonna sit at this table, you've got to invest in this community far beyond just putting buildings up and providing homes and walking away with your millions of dollars at the end.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, 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 I agree. And I like the fact that, you know, when you said you, 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 you opened up a school, um, that, that, where, and you had a checklist, you know, you, okay, these are the things, and then where are the best practices? You know, hey, this is a good idea for our size, size of the community, and maybe we can, we could start here, and then if we need to tweak it. I just think we just jumped into the city of South Fulton with, you know, and just take a quick jump and just hope we could, we can get it back to the top of the water, but moving forward.
Is not a strategy. Hope is, hope is not a strategy, and what gets you back to the top is a strategy with clear metrics and real work.
Exactly, exactly. And indefinitely dealing with a city, schools, ninety-three million dollar projects, we can't do it, we can't work off hope. We've got to, we have got to have clear direction and everything. Um, all right, well, that was great. Do we have any hands up? Um, let me see. Um, Rashad, is there any hands up?
At this time, but if anyone in the audience would like to ask a question, please use the reaction button and raise your hand. Back to you, Patricia.
Okay, um, let's talk about the budget a little bit. Um, the city approved, or is getting ready to approve this four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar budget. I want to see it. Matter of fact, I want to have a say in it. It's my money, right? Well, how do you feel and what is your thought process about having a grace period or a look-see period before the budget is approved for its, for the citizens?
Oh, absolutely. I think it's a must. Again, it goes back to building that trust over a kilometer of time. I also think what's important is that it's not enough to, it's so interesting, because sometimes I think people overcomplicate, uh, government. We all manage a budget. The budget is not where the problem is. The budget is in how I spend the money. I could, I could get the budget to look right. I could get the numbers to balance, I can do all of that. But how we spend our money, and what's most important to me, is I think about a philosophy, again, I support my leaders with. If I want to know what's important to you, I'mma look two places. The first is your calendar, the second is your, your checkbook or your budget. And so if you're telling me students first, then I need to see that reflected in, in your, um, budget. If you're telling me our residents are first, then I need to see that reflected in your budget. I can't see that if we're not creating these spaces where, um, residents actually get to interrogate the way in which I want to be served. I should be able to ask what I, you know, what I want for dinner before you make the plate, right? And so I think there's an opportunity for us here to really get transparent about how we're spending the money, but more importantly, it's also like, don't just do it beforehand. At the end of the fiscal year, we've got to look and say, hey, were we on track? Or no, did we go off track because we decided to go on five vacations? We all manage our households similarly. This is something that I feel like every resident, regardless of, um, where you stand, understands that there's a budget, and then there's the reality, and then there're the surprises, and then there're all of the things. But if we're not narrating that, um, if we're not sharing that out loud with our residents, that's how you get to broken trust. So you've got to do it on the front end, but I would also push us to say, at the end of the fiscal year, we need to be interrogating the budget versus the expenditures in the same way.
Yeah, I, I, I agree one hundred and hundred percent. Um, I want a fresh market in my community, but I can't afford, I can't afford fresh market. And as much as I love, um, the districts handing out food on a monthly basis, I don't always want to get my food at somebody's trunk. Um, what do you see as a plan or thought, idea about shaping this food insecurity? Or is it all just a sham?
So I would say research said, research says it's not a sham. We've got to make sure our, our, our kids and our families are food secure. I would say the way in which we do that, though, um, and I, I shared a little bit about this at the last forum, is we've got to be intentional about courting the businesses who we want to see in South Fulton. And whether that's a fresh market, whether it's a Trader Joe's, whether it's a small business owner, whether it's the entrepreneur, I am a person who truly believes that if we are a city that people see as attractive and a place where their business can thrive, we can have whatever we want. And I think there's an opportunity for us to really say, like, how do we go after and how do we court these businesses who, A, don't just come and bring their warehouses without also bringing their headquarters, without also investing in our schools, without also making sure that they are managing their environmental impact? How do we make sure that we're courting those businesses in ways that they actually want to, to place in South Fulton? It's also not lost on me, y'all, that there's a narrative about our city. There is a narrative about our city, and no, there, there's a reason people don't want to come. And much of that has to do with our leadership. And so a huge part of it for me is we got to change the narrative. Um, I, I share that, like, a lot of the kids that I work with, especially when I was teaching high school, would always be like, I don't care what people think about me, and I'm like, you got to. Because one day, you will be sitting on the other side of a table for a job interview, and you're gonna have to actually care what that person thinks about you. And right now, South Fulton is moving in a way, and sometimes where we don't seem to care that we're on the news in this way, or we don't seem to care that this is a conversation that is happening. And every time that happens for us, we lose a little risk, we lose a little pizzazz, and it makes it difficult for businesses, for even the small business owners, to say, this is a place where I want to build my future. So for me, I think it's all about, A, let's not be undeniable, um, let's not be in denial of the narrative that is out there. Let's actively work to fix it. The second part of that is, let's go after the businesses that we want to see, and then let's also hold them accountable for serving our committee, our community, at the same high standard that they may be serving some others.
No, great, that's, that's great. Um, and, and we have to keep our eye on the prize. And the prize is that city of South Fulton is growing, and we've, we've got to, uh, manage the, the growing pains and things like that. But grandma and grandpa live in this community. Before the city of South Fulton, this is where we went to go visit grandma for Thanksgiving and Christmas. You know, it was an agricultural world, lots of trees, um, and just where you went to go visit grandma. And I know that that's not the vision for the city of South Fulton, but we can't forget grandma and grandpa and making sure that we meet their needs, but we also have to remember that we need young people. You know, we, we need a balance. So how do you plan on, on, on maintaining that balance and not forgetting grandma and grandpa, but bringing in the, uh, the mechanisms that will create, um, youth to come in?
Yeah, absolutely. So first, Patricia, let me say, thank you for not calling them our most vulnerable, because the people I hang out with on the court and who I'm walking with down, uh, Enon, ain't nothing vulnerable about them. They could probably outwalk me on any given Sunday. So, thank you for not calling them the most vulnerable. They are grandma and grandpa. Um, and so I say all that to say, I think that there are two things that we really have to do. Um, y'all, and some of this is also just grounded in the collective nature of community. And when you understand that this isn't about one subset or another subset of individuals, but that we're really trying to build a multi-generational community, you do a few things. The first thing is, you make sure that grandma and grandpa can stay in their houses that they bought.
Yeah.
Our families have invested in this community, and the cost of living is going up and up and up and up. And if you are on a fixed income, that sanitation tax hits a little different. We need to be very conscious about how we are making sure that our long-term residents and grandma and grandpa can actually stay in their homes.
Yeah.
The second part of that is, I think we have an opportunity to make sure that the way in which the city is supporting, um, our, our elderly also involves more than just activities, but places that keep their quality of life, um, high. I think that there are opportunities for us to make sure that we're, um, supporting them, whether it's via, um, more senior centers, whether it's via, um, I'm from, you know, I grew up in DeKalb, so I recognize how active that seniors, uh, that senior center is over there. I think we, again, courting the, the industries that actually support what we're trying to create for a multi-generational community, which is actually our roots. Multi-generational communities are not foreign to us. And so I think that a huge part of what I would also share in that, um, as someone who, uh, sits between the cusp of two generations, so I share, uh, very proudly that my parents went to segregated schools, not my grandparents. Uh, my mother was class of nineteen sixty-six, and my dad was born in nineteen forty-four. And so I understand what it means to be a part of a multi-generational community. I, on the other hand, grew up in the midst of the internet age. And so I understand that we've got technology that is advancing far more than what my parents even could sometimes keep up with. And we need intentional city services that bridge that gap. Even at my tender age, every time Apple or iPhone changes something, it takes me twenty minutes to figure out where the button was, where it went, what it did, how I get there. And I just think we can do a better job. As our city is changing, we don't just need to change the button. We need to make sure that we're bringing every generation along in a way that says, we got you, we're here for you. Yes, we're shifting, and these are the services that are gonna help you as we make this shift. But also, we're gonna take away this, this stressor of, are you gonna lose your home because you can't afford these property taxes?
Right, yeah, I, and, and I'm with you one hundred and ten percent. Um, I believe that there should be services for, um, our grandmas and grandpas, um, to, to bring them along. And I'm, 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 I'm in agreement with, um, I don't believe our mom, I don't believe, um, grandma and grandpa should be paying trash. Um, that, there should be no, and, and, and I don't think they should be paying a property tax. If they own their home, and a lot of grandmas and grandpas do, um, I've been in this area for sixteen, sixteen years, I've been in Georgia since nineteen ninety-four, and I'm from Connecticut, and, um, a lot of them do, and now it's just like, where, that, they feel like they're being thrown away, is what I'm trying to say, and we can't throw them, we can't throw them away, so.
Yeah, and what would it mean to say that we have funds to support grandma and grandpa when they can't, right? Like, there are opportunities, I think, for the city to show up in ways, uh, with relief funds and things like that that can support our grandmas and grandpas, but I also think we've got an opportunity to say, y'all, we're not just gonna hit the change button and hope that you got a new charger and that everything works. We're actually gonna bring you all the way.
Yeah, I agree. And I know, I can hear, I can hear, um, um, Ms. Sudan saying, well, we have a lot of exemptions for y'all. You know, yeah, because you know why? Because we're entitled to them, and you owe it, you owe us that. But we, we're gonna start needing more, because the cost of living, food, housing, But we we're gonna start needing more because the cost of living, food, housing. It is, it is, I I can't believe it. I mean, I remember when I used to buy bread for seventy-five cents. And 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 I'm like you, I'm in an era where we had the telephone, you know, we had to stand next to the wall. So I understand, so I'm I'm in between and I'm still asking my son, what happened to that button on my cellphone? I don't know where it is, but anyway, um do we have any hands up? Okay, I mean, I can keep going because I got like tons of paper, tons of questions. So please um ask a question. Um let's talk about um public comments. Public comment seems to be a strategy for the city council. Put it in where where it will do the less damage and take, well, put it in where it do the less damage. Take it out when it'll do some damage. Um public comments is our only. Opportunity to say to say what we want to say with to our leaders. And I just feel like it's, we need to work on it and I think that we need to open it, broaden it. Create some parameters, as the the city clerk does say, you know what I mean? And and I keep, this keeps ringing in my ear what Sebastian said would bothered me. Well, I don't want to be here till one thirty in the morning. Well, brah, you're not gonna be here till one thirty in the morning. If you allow us to have a comment, keep it within two minutes and then guess what? How about keeping your all comments to two minutes because they can stretch a two-hour meeting till one o'clock themselves? So what is your thought quickly on public comments? Because I've been there.
Yeah, public comments are necessary. I mean, again, all of my school experience, even as somebody who who sat in the superintendent's seat. For our network, you gotta speak and connect to the people. And what really hurts me about that is if you don't let them speak, then you're actually not connected. If you, if if there's a challenge and I'm not giving you an opportunity to voice it, then I actually will never know. Or I actually just get to pretend like this challenge doesn't actually exist. And so for me, um public comment is necessary. It's also, you know, not a foreign concept. Ask any superintendent who has to sit and listen and do and respond to parents or any other city council that allows their public comment to operate that way. And so I think that there, that again, I don't have to twist myself in a pretzel if I'm I'm leading with integrity. And so the public comment doesn't faze me. It is exactly that, an opportunity for my residents to communicate with me what they need.
Awesome, awesome. And that's fair. And there's always a challenge and it always, once again, we go back to the integrity, why don't they want me to talk? You know what I mean? And um I had to step back from top public comments a couple of times, honey, because I can go there real fast. So I'm doing better, though. Next question, and I want to make sure I bring this um while we're looking for some hands out there. Data centers and warehouses. I just was on, I think it was uh TikTok or YouTube. And there is a city Fayette, Fayette County, they're doing a data center in Fayette County, too close to homes. People are moving out. Uh the lady said, we moved to La Grange and now she is beginning to advocate. Because we just do not, they're not telling us, we do not know. And I've got sixteen warehouses down Oakley Industrial Boulevard. Nine of them are empty and what are we doing? I mean, I understand that we are, we we were, we are an agricultural by the comprehensive. Whatever plan that the city has, and I know that rezoning is is necessary, but come on now. Uh Drew the man had a great question in the other in the other um in the other segment. How do we keep our trees? How do how do we keep the air clean? And how do we create a balance of living space and warehouses and data centers?
Yeah, the short answer to that is you don't build the plane while flying it. You make some of these decisions ahead of time. You simply say to people, here is the plan, here's what we're working with. I'm a stick-to-the-script kind of person. That's why the the lack of metrics bother me so much is because you can't measure yourself against anything if you're at the fifty thousand foot level. And so for me, yeah, you don't build a plane while flying it. You get to say, okay, yes, we might say yes to this data center, but we're also saying no to these. We might say yes to this, but we know that we're not on track for our green space initiative, so we're gonna prioritize that. You gotta wait. We got other things that we need to be doing to get to. And so building the plane while flying it is just not the way we should be operating. When it comes to data centers. And the second thing I will say about this is um it disheartens me that we don't have a regional approach to this. Um what I have seen happen is uh someone will go to College Park, they'll go to Union City, they'll go to Fairburn, they'll come to South Fulton. Um and then they'll say, okay, well, we all got two data centers. Now we're up to twenty data centers and here we are, all south of twenty. That's unacceptable. We need to be making these decisions with a regional approach. Um because what's gonna end up happening is that we're all going to be um, to your point, stuck with these empty buildings. Stuck with the environmental impacts. As a matter of fact, probably doubling some of those impacts because we just lack coordination and 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 a phone call.
Yes, and you said, you said it, you said it exactly. Um because the City of South Fulton is surrounded. We're like, we're we're surrounded, Union City, Forest Park, College Park, Fairburn. Um and they all got their own data centers and their own um warehouses too. And I I often called it, um eventually, we're gonna be a warehouse desert. And then everybody's gonna move out, you know what I mean? And then it'll be just like a data center warehouse city, um because there, I have one um. Maybe two, three football fields right out my back door and it's a warehouse. And it's just, wow, really, we could have, we could have done something and it's it's uh it's actually post. We could have definitely done something more with that spot. But anyway, um something to think about when you get in there and uh those approvals and those zoning people and. And those developers come up to you wanting to, you know, add another warehouse to your community. Because we we we've had our fair share on Oakley Industrial and I think Fulton Industrial is getting tired too a little bit.
Absolutely.
Great. Um any hands up? No hands up? Oh wait, yes.
Yes, so I I I have a question. If we can go back to the public comments uh for a moment. Uh if you were elected for city council, would you, would you be for or against reinstating the live chat?
So I I'm for the live chat. I am never for limiting people's opportunities to communicate. Um I am also very clear that uh to lead without it uh breeds more gaps. Uh you can, again, address people and address their concerns and actually serve them if you actually don't know what they need.
Thank you. So it, so if you're elected, we can expect you to bring legislation to to reinstate that live chat?
Yes, you can.
All right. And then the the follow-up question that I have is, what is the first piece of legislation that you think you would offer? If you were elected?
Yeah, absolutely. So there there are a couple of things that I think are incredibly important and also also timely. Um recognizing, for example, we're having some zoning issues. I think we need to be very clear about uh our zoning regulations. And I want to make sure that we hold ourselves to those where there's, I know some conversation about shifting some of those for a gas station and some other things. I think we gotta, A, make sure that we're solid on that. The second thing that I share that is also near near and dear to me. Um is that I recognize that while Grady is coming to the south side, um we need to be much more responsive to our residents. In case of an emergency. And so for me, I think we need some legislation that helps us actually track that actively and hold ourselves accountable. For our emergency response times and ways um that actually improve the quality of life for our residents. And so for me, um it is literally about making sure that we are showing up for residents when we need them the most.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's great. Um yeah, we, yeah, we need, we need, we need a hospital. We need a a small. I mean, I don't know, something definitely to take a look into. Um and let me see if anybody, okay, so I have another question. Um recently, the city council gave a one million dollar, gave one million dollars to the Miracle League of South Fulton. Should this have been a public or um or a citizen um discussion? And do you think that maybe the timing of giving one million dollars during campaign season has has some? Integrity issue?
So I will say this, um I won't speculate about the intent around the million dollars. I will, however, say that I do think um that this is an opportunity, again, it's it's a missed opportunity. I don't know many residents that would have disagreed. What I'm saying is that the opportunity for us to actually bring our residents along in a way that actually builds trust. In a way that says we are taking care again, building that multi-generational, multi-able community that supports all of our residents. But I don't know if I'm the only person. I was quite surprised at some of the way in which that was rolled out. And so I think that there's an opportunity that, yeah, when we are doing the right thing, doggone it. Let's talk about doing it in a way that brings residents along and doesn't necessarily um, to your point, uh have people questioning. And I'm not surprised that uh some are questioning that intent. Um but I do think there's an opportunity where, again, when things are positive, we also aren't telling our story. And so it seems very, um it it leads to speculation, I think, that also shouldn't overshadow an opportunity. To actually build and serve our community. I'd also love to know, like, who else was considered, right? Like, there's a level, again, going back to your transparency, but this is a decision that we should have. We should have been bringing residents along the way and then we wouldn't be asking this question.
Right, exactly. And I and I'm all for supporting whoever needs help. Um a million dollars is a lot and I know if I was sitting on city council, I'd be like, wait a minute, I need a million dollars over here. I'll take five and you can give five hundred thousand, you can give them five hundred thousand, but I I agree with you. I think, and this is, this is what we're talking about, wha- a million dollars, you know, I mean, okay, but it's it's done, so Rashad?
Yes, so um there's a question in the chat is is actually a couple of questions, so I'm gonna break it up. What is your position on our police department?
So I will also share, uh my father is a retired NYPD officer. Um also a retired US Marshal, uh law enforcement holds a special place in my heart. What I will say is that, again, because you understand that my father was one of the first African-Americans on the New York Police Department. So what I know about police officers comes is really where I get my integrity from, y'all. My daddy didn't play. Um and a huge part of this for me is uh we've got, again, some leadership integrity issues in our police department. Um we, but leadership is reflective of the top. And I think we've got an opportunity um to right that ship for our law enforcement. Um and those who are continuing to serve our community. Um and I also think we have an opportunity uh working through our city manager and holding uh that department accountable. And I I do think, yes, while it is managed by the city manager, the accountability rests, the buck stops here. Um and so I think we've got to make sure that our city council has enough oversight to make sure of the city manager, of course. To make sure that like we're writing that department for those who are risking their lives every day. What's the second part of that question, Rashad?
Would you recommend another operational review or an independent third-party investigation and why?
Yeah, um I would say here's the deal, the information, let me say this. I think there's some information that has been made to the public. I won't pretend like I have all of the pieces of the information as it regards to that. But I do think anytime you can get an independent review, it's a yes. Um I think that's incredibly important because I think, A, it protects the city first and foremost. And secondly, I think you then have an opportunity to really make decisions without it being clouded um by some of the other factors. What I also know to be true is that while we are moving forward with the new police headquarters and the new fire headquarters. I said this before, buildings don't change things. They build, you you put them in a a nice, beautiful building, that's not gonna change the culture of that organization. The leader is going to change the culture of that organization. And so what I want to make sure is that what we are building in our our um public safety, our our police department and our fire department. Is that we are actually building a culture that serves our residents. Because guess what? Our law enforcement, they all, and our public service folks, they also feel well-served by the city.
Thank you. And there was another part to this that I didn't get a chance to finish, but it was. Keep in mind, we already spent eighty-four thousand dollars on a previous operational review. And none of the recommendations were followed by Chief Meadows or his faithful followers. What are your thoughts on having a review of those of of those uh recommendations and seeing how they can be implemented?
Yeah, I think I think that's very valid. Um there's an opportunity, y'all. You actually have to act, right? We know there's a problem. The question is, what are we doing to solve the problem? I think at some point, we actually need to take heed to some of those recommendations. But I also think we, A, have to see this for the problem that it is. Y'all, if if our um police officers don't feel valued. They're just gonna go work for East Point College Park, APD, anywhere else. And I think that what we have to actually understand is what's at stake. And when you understand what's at stake, you typically move much faster. Um and so for me, I think that we are in a place where if we don't fix our cultural issues as it relates to uh the police department. Where we are going to be up a creek, um because they could drive five miles, ten miles, fifteen miles. In any other direction and be better served.
Thank you for that.
That was a good question. Um it's it's, we are, the city is. Obviously plagued with a lot of issues that are going on that really need some some stronger leadership and um. Some better planning and and prevention. And we definitely, we definitely need that, um because it's hurting the city as a whole. And um as as a former employee that was on there, uh we can't, we can't, we can't keep, you know. We can't keep doing this, you know what I'm saying? Like I said, we're eight years old and we're out of the Pampers and the pull-ups. Okay, so we're in our tighty-whities now and really need to start standing and toeing the line when it comes to address, you know, uh. Moving this city forward with integrity and sound practices. So and that's what we're looking for, Joy, um Dr. Joy. Yeah, we we need it and I'll be the first one to tell you. And many of of us will tell you. But anyway, is there any hands up? Um because I got more questions.
Yes. Okay, I I I have one more question. All right, so so um oftentimes Patricia and I will have conversations. And she likes to bring up to me about the circle of protection, right? And there seems to be a circle of protection with our elected officials. If you were on council, what would you do to hold your to hold your fellow colleagues accountable should something happen?
Got it. I just want to make sure I understand the circle of protection. Can you give me a little more on that?
Patricia, you want to explain it?
The circle of protection is my theory that the city, the city council, the people who interact with each other on a daily basis. Protect each other. Um I believe that their hands are all in their, in each other's back pockets. I believe they look out for each other and I think that there's a lot of. Uh nefarious activities, you know, on the lighter side and maybe on the heavier side. Sure looks that way to me. Um I mean, we can go into the P card and we can definitely go into the residential uh uh residency requirements. For um candidates. So when I say circle of protection, I that I I believe that um. You know, the city, um its employees, its directors, it's um all of them, part of them or some of them. They all look out for each other and they scratch their own, they scratch each other's back and they have their hands in each other's pockets. So that's the circle of of corruption. Nicely said.
Got it, got it, got it. So two things I I would bring Rashad is first, um again, I would start with. Uh love me enough to hold me accountable. Uh love me enough to make me better. Um and I think that that is the culture that is needed. I run an organization where one of our mantras, when you get hired, is that it's okay to make mistakes. Um it is not okay to make the same mistake twice here. And so we hold our team to the highest standard. And I think that when you are serving the public, you've got to hold yourself and others to the highest standard. And if I love you and I can uh sit and have a good time and laugh and joke and kiki with you, I should love you enough to be able to give you this a feedback. I should love you enough to be able to tell you when you're wrong. I think that there is an opportunity for us to really shape accountability. Um by not necessarily taking our, um you know, there's a saying that like if 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 you make a public mistake. Don't apologize to me privately. And I feel like that's what's happening with our residents. We have made a lot of public mistakes and then in our one-on-one conversations with residents, we're apologizing privately. That doesn't build trust across the city, it doesn't build trust across the residents, and I think ultimately what we've got to be able to do. And I think ultimately, what we've got to be able to do to kind of break that helm for me is, I love everybody enough to hold them accountable. And if I don't hold you accountable, I don't love you.
Right. And another angle to that is, you got to know when you're getting ready to get involved and be able to step away. I know, I know it's a slippery slope, but you're right. We can't afford it no more, you know? We cannot afford it. Is there any hands up? Okay, great. P-card spending, I'm like, done with it. It was 5K, now it's 10K, and then I was told by a city council, well, it's actually 65K a year. Okay, I mean, I mean, you know, maybe I should run. Okay, you know, it's one, I have a background in accounting and finance, and, and, look, you're not gonna bamboozle me, honey. It's a, what is it? I have a salary, that's my second salary, is the way I'm looking at it. Okay? Now, I'm prior military, and we did the per dim, per dim concept, where I told you, you're gonna, you're gonna stay at the motel six for $66 a night, and you're gonna get 75, no, 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 you're gonna get $5 for breakfast, $6 for lunch, and I'm gonna give you $15 for dinner. And then, yeah, that's about it. And just bring the receipts, and here's your check, and the rest is on you. You cannot sit there and tell me, Dr. Joy, that we are the city council, and the employees get a P-card, the, you know, the police department gets a P-card, the economic development department gets a P-card, and you cannot tell me that, that, that there's something unfair is there. Are you doing away with it? Are you gonna change it, Joy? What are you gonna do?
Yeah, so I think the first thing is, in today's digital age, I think we've got to make sure that we're holding people accountable. One, you gotta rein it in. Everybody does not need a P-card. The second thing is, you also can implement policies that say, if you misuse the P-card, guess where it's coming from? At my company, you misuse your P-card, it's coming from your check. We make sure that there are opportunities for us to engage in accountability quick, fast, and often, because if you wait six months, now the bill is astronomical. Whereas if I catch you, what it was $200, you think twice. I think there is an opportunity for us to hold those who have P-cards to the highest level of accountability. I think we also need to understand that there are, especially for some of the personal expenses that I have seen. It's just a common practice for me when I have my work card, that if I'm on a personal trip, I'll submit the reimbursement of it. I'll bring all the receipts, I'll do it on the backend. I think there are, again, some personal integrity issues that don't allow us to operate with integrity with our P-card. Because there's an opportunity to say, I am on this personal trip, let me work this out when I get back, I'm gonna use my personal card to do all of the things, and whatever with city business, I'll just submit the receipt, and y'all can reimburse me later. Sure, whatever. My point is, is that there are opportunities here for us to rein it in and to also hold people accountable. And I'm not talking about when we're at the end of the year. And that, to me, is exactly where we need to be. I also think that, yeah, you got to rein it in. Everybody doesn't need to have a P-card.
I agree. I, I, I so agree with you. And the amount of the P-card, I think they just gifted themselves with it, and they have been running amok. And if I was in that county, county department, trust me, yeah, I would be locking it down. And, and that's a good question. We recently had a, like, the mayor's, the mayor's P-card. There was an audit, 70,000 of receipts. And then it was exposed, I think it was today or yesterday on, on Facebook, that another council member, domes, I might as well just say it's all public, her P-card statement was put on Facebook, and it showed some university fees. Right, so, and this is what we're talking about. So the evidence is there, you know? And there's other city council members, I can rattle it all up. I've done, what do I do when I order to see paperwork? I've done open records for a lot of them. And I'm like, wow. Yeah, I'm in the wrong business.
The P-card is a privilege. If you can't operate with the privilege, then you don't get it. I think, again, accountability is the metric. If we are saying that this is our policy, and we're gonna stick to that policy, which I'm not sure that I would, but I definitely know that there would be some reining in of the P-card. But also, there are consequences for misuse of the P-card, again, that are swift and are immediate, and what I would call, what my mother would call eternal.
You know, and that's exactly, and, and you said it, where are the consequences? Because if the audit said, you know, there's a lot of spending here, here, here's a beautiful graph, okay, how come we're not getting that money back? I mean, I think there was a couple of conversations, well, you know, we've already passed the ship, and the ship's already sunk. No, because that money needs to be put back in the till, you know what I mean? And to me, it's theft. If you don't bring the receipts, and you didn't, you didn't get approval for it, you didn't get allocation, it's theft, Dr. Joy, and that's the way I look at it. But for some reason, well, you know, next time we'll do better, and, you know, we'll write a policy tomorrow on it, and we're just way behind. It's like, I feel like there's the, what do they call it? The horse behind the carriage? The carriage is behind the horse. I mean, we've got a, we've got a, hopefully, when, you know, when you get, if you win the seat, we need this, we need this kind of leadership. I'm like, look, okay, you know, I know y'all had this for eight years, but I'm not going there with y'all. I just can't be a part of this circle of corruption. Because one person says, well, you did it, and then finally, two months later, well, you did it too. You know, and now it's like travel. The mayor goes on all of this travel, you know what I mean? All over the world, Africa, I mean, Colombia, Canada, I mean, we have other, other councils, Puerto Rico, and wherever else they went, Europe. And he gets a, he gets a forensic audit on his travel, he's been exposed, kicked in the mud, you know? I mean, it's just, and now we're like, well, wait a minute, what about all the rest? And I understand that you're gonna say, it's an integrity issue, and we need more policies, we need stricter, but we need what? You said accountability. Now, if we were to add up all of this money that's spent, that's our tax balance. What is your thought about all this travel? Why does the mayor or the city council have to go anywhere? We've got an economic development department. We need to be growing our, our community with people who, and, and businesses around our community. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
Travel, talk about it.
Yeah, yeah. I will say this, I think that there, there are opportunities to support South Fulton and to make those negotiations. But see how I'm sitting right here with you on Zoom right now, Patricia? I think there are lots of ways that we can build those investments and make sure that we are making those travel investments in a time where it is actually going to benefit the residents of South Fulton. Right now, we have no evidence that these things have benefited anyone other than the individuals. And so for me, yes, this world is vast, it is big, our potential is amazing. But what we have to do is do the legwork. And I don't have to do that legwork in 2025. I do not have to do that legwork in person until it is time, until it is at a place where we know where we are driving towards economically, what we are driving towards in partnerships and international relationships is actually going to benefit the residents of South Fulton. And until then, we just don't need to be spending that kind of money. The second thing I will say is, can we just work on what's happening right here, right now? Let's get this in order before we start looking elsewhere. I think it's an important thing to say about priorities. If our priority right now is building trust with our residents, I don't need to be on a plane to do that, I need to be in my community doing that. So for me, it's about navigating our perspectives and making sure that we're doing it in a way, I mean, our priorities and making sure that we're doing it in a way that we are building those international relationships because of our proximity to the airport, which is attractive for a lot of folks, but also because we know that the relationships we're building are actually gonna do more than benefit individuals, they're benefiting our residents.
Yeah, great, great answer. And I'm hoping that when, if and when you win the seat, any approvals for travel on the, for the mayor will be disapproved. So Rashad?
Yeah, I just wanted to encourage the residents, if you would like to ask a question, please use the reaction button, raise your hand, and we will acknowledge you.
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe I'm doing a really good job, Rashad, because I'm learning.
Yeah.
All right.
We, we, we have a question from Brandon. Please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Hey, good afternoon, well, good evening, Ms. Joy, how are you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Pretty good, pretty good. So I do, I've been listening this entire time, and I do have a little, well, a small question just to ask you, from a perspective and your, and my own personal opinion, and you as being possibly a new District Two representative for the city of South Fulton, balancing expectations for residents while also providing true and accurate transparency and accountability, how would you manage that?
Yeah, so I think the first thing is, there's a part of this that has to be grounded in, you know, especially as I've had conversations with residents, and I've been out in neighborhoods having conversations about the realm and the perspective of what the city council is responsible for. I think so, there are pieces of this that we also have to be deeply grounded in, right? Like, what is within our purview and what is not, particularly as it relates to, like, our mayoral structure. I've had some questions about, like, city councils and schools, and so, like, just making sure that we're clear about what are the expectations of the role. But also, when I talk to residents, Brandon, we are not that far apart. And what I hope to be able to do is keep it that way. And so for me, a huge part of balancing both the expectations while also managing the responsibilities of the role is staying connected to the community, and I'm just not sure our current council has done that. And for me, when I say where, you know, we, I can be having a conversation with a resident, whether it's about the P-card conversation, whether it's about the mayor's travel, most recently, prior to the mail cap decision, it was all about that. And so I think that what we realize is, no resident argued that we didn't need better facilities for our police officers and our firefighters. Everybody agreed with that. The path to it was very different, and I feel like if our city council had just done the grassroots, hit the beat, grab yourself on the sidewalk, talk to your people, we would have been able to avoid those entire four or five weeks of my life that now I cannot get back. I think that there's an opportunity for us to really stay, and for me in particular, to balance those expectations by staying close to the residents, knowing what it is, not just having the town halls, but being out, talking to neighbors, meeting neighbors, having the conversation when I'm shopping in public to grab my groceries, because I need to know where my residents are. And I think when you show up that way, you're able to balance expectations but also provide a lot of care and honestly build trust. And while you don't necessarily have to agree with every decision that the council makes, you do have to be able to trust them, and that, for me, is what's broken. So the first thing I would want to bring is, A, building that trust by staying close to the community and making sure that I'm sharing the narrative, when, y'all, we're not that far apart. Our path might be different, and we need to shift that. But our ideals and our desires are usually aligned.
Got it, thank you for that. And just to follow, so when dealing with misinformation that is publicized in the community, and also staying within the realms of your responsibility as a city council member, where would you lie in the responsibility of making sure that you manage the expectations of that, the proper communication with the community, but also protecting the city?
Yeah, for sure. I think communication is, is first and foremost, and I, I would say for me in particular, Brandon, moments like this are helpful. It is 2025, we've got lots of people who are working who need access, like, social media is a great place to start, but also, you got to be able to tell your narrative, and you got to be able to connect with people. So for me, communication looks a couple of ways. Looks like being out in communities, not just when it's election season, showing up at the HOA meetings, but also when things are going well so that we can celebrate the good things that are happening in South Fulton. I don't always want to, if elected, I don't only want to meet with residents when it's a problem. Like, I want to meet with residents to be connected. I think the second part of that for me is making sure that we are reaching residents where they are. And again, I, I continue to be disheartened, as I shared earlier, you know, my parents were part of, you know, the sit-in generation. And so to know that only 15% of our residents are actively engaged, or even know who their city council member is, like, that, for me, is an opportunity where we can at least be showing up for our community differently. So for me, communication's got to be both leveraging our digital tools, whether it's through the app, through our website, through social media, but also creating environments like this where we're not just connecting with residents because it's a problem, but that we're connecting with residents for the sake of connection.
Absolutely. And I thank you for that. And I just want to, just want to just point out that what you mentioned is absolutely true. We do have to make sure that, you know, we're not just coming out to the community when it's time for an election or in the time for a vote. But that's also vice versa with the community, making sure that they're not coming, well, as in the sense of running for office, they're not coming to the community for votes when it's, you know, suits them for that election at a particular time. Because we have some certain candidates pop up for certain events consecutively that have not been involved in the community prior before that. So it, I think it does go both ways, and I applaud you for mentioning that. And lastly, what would you do to bridge the gap between the community having access to the city council meetings? Because right now, the numbers are really low, and the city council meetings and other commission meetings and board commission meetings, what would you do to incite and encourage our community in District Two to attend more?
Start by making them more efficient. I'm sorry, I would start by making them more efficient. Time is people's greatest commodity, Brandon. And when we are operating from a place where we cannot seem to run these meetings effectively, you're not gonna get people. And again, it goes back into the twisting into a pretzel, right? Like, we know, again, we don't have to look far to see how effective city council meetings run. But what is also happening is a lot of the work that shouldn't be discussed in the city council meetings should happen in committee work, or should happen in some of the other places, is now taking up council meeting time. And so I think for me, the very first thing that I would do is, you, I believe we would get more people to the city council meetings if they believed it was worth their time. They could speak at public comments, they could voice their joys and their concerns, but also if we were just way more efficient.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I think that was a great answer. And, and getting, getting those public comments, I think Rashad was saying, on, on the Zoom where they can, at home, you know what I mean? So, I think, I think I can say this, Mike Johnson, do you think all P-cards should have been scrutinized to the same level as the mayor, and why?
Oh, absolutely. I think that this, very quickly, again, I feel like we're trying to shape a narrative and, and just not being honest. And again, it's okay to make mistakes, say the mistake was made, and hold yourself accountable, hold each other accountable, and move on. I think the problem is, we keep tearing these wounds off these Band-Aids, so residents never get an opportunity to heal. We just got through the mayor 70,000, now somebody else's, you know, however much money in these charges. And so we keep doing it to ourselves with our residents in ways that don't actually build trust. Just rip the Band-Aid off. Boom, here we are. This is the news, this is what happened, but we all know there are also some intentions around that and some rationale. So, but we also have to understand that when you're operating from a place of integrity and you have built that trust, people will either, A, understand, or B, hold you accountable.
Wow, yeah, absolutely. And moving into the new season, I mean, we've got, what, District, District Two, we've got some new players that are gonna be potentially coming on, and, and you have to, you got to get in there, and you got to, look, we're not doing this, not this year, honey, you know, not while I'm sitting at the table, we've got to, we got to fix it, and then we've got to put some actions in place and keep it moving. Or we're gonna see the same thing over and over again. You mentioned, you kind of brought up, and I, I saw this on Facebook too, it's campaign season, so now HOAs are on the top of the topic, the subject, and a sore subject. Your citizens and many citizens of the city of South Fulton are being, I don't even know what word to use, when it comes to HOAs, and violations, fees, and let's just keep it to this point, the fees and the violations, you know, are questionable, they're not, you know, they're not, they're not right. And you have citizens living in homes, they're questioning, do I move? Do I just get out of here? Or, I mean, what do I do? There are a lot of Senate hearings that have been going on. I know that District Seven, Linda Pritchett, has been at the helm for all this. And I've been kind of going with her as well. I think also Connie has been on the forefront in HOA reform. And yes, is it Quazir Alexander? HOAs are outdated, they have a purpose, I don't mind having an HOA, but don't use But don't use my house to put a lien on it or to do something, you know, that is, that is, you know, let, you know, illegal or not fair or not right. You know, uh, the bylaws are outdated. I mean, what's your, what's just, just what's your general thought about that?
Yeah, so as somebody who has experienced this, I think, um, I grew up in a subdivision with my parents that had an HOA, it was community-led. Uh, it is now corporate-led. This is why we're here, y'all. Um, there are corporations running these HOAs that don't care about the community that they're in. That's the bottom line. When your neighbor down the street was running your HOA and was collecting checks and picking them up and walking by and talking to you about your grass, it felt different. Now we have all of these corporate moves in the HOA system that are actually not serving our community. Um, but for me, uh, from a city council perspective, the real challenge is, again, I have always said this, South Fulton deserves the big seat at the table, we don't need to be at the kiddy table anymore. To your point, we're eight years old. So as our state legislators are having that conversation, we need to be leading that conversation. We are the seventh largest city in the state. So no, I'm not sitting at the kiddy table when we talk about HOAs. And we know that the vast majority of our communities are grounded with HOAs. So there, there's an opportunity for us here, I think, to, to shape that conversation regionally again. Um, because again, we are negatively impacted. And so I think, um, for us, it is about being at the table when those conversations, working alongside our state legislators and, and representatives. Um, because ultimately, uh, y'all, this is, this, there needs to be a corporate hand slap here. It, it's, it is what happens when capitalism, you know, takes over communities.
Yeah, thank you for that, thank you. Anyone have a question? Anyone's hand is raised, let me see, let me check.
Uh, we, um, we don't have any additional questions, but, um, we can go into opening remarks in about five minutes? I'm sorry, closing remarks in about five minutes?
Okay, all right. Um, let's see, um, about five minutes? Okay, so I'll do one more, I'll do one more question. And, um, wow, I mean.
Wait a minute, we, we do have a question.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Conde Perry. Ms. Conde Perry, please unmute yourself, you have the floor, thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, yeah, I came in late, so I'm hoping that my question hasn't been asked already, but I think it's probably, others probably already know the answer. I'm fairly new to the whole political scene and it's because I am an owner and a resident at Camelot. So it kinda threw me, with us, our fight against our HOA has thrown me into the politics of South Fulton. Now, I've also gone to some of the senate hearings, uh, regarding HOA reform. And I know that's a whole Dem and Republican fight tug of war right there. So I'm not even sure what we can do as a, as a city, because they're not able to resolve it. But anyway, uh, FYI, Don, Donzella James is having another one, October twenty-first. But, yeah, so my question is, when it comes to city council meetings, what is the purpose of the executive sessions during a regular session? I mean, cuz I've been to city council meetings when they were at, um, Welcome Mall Park. And just in the middle of the, of the meeting, they're like, we going into executive session. So, I mean, can you explain that? As far, what is the purpose of that?
Yeah, so I, I can share, usually when, uh, meetings go into executive session, it's usually because they're discussing something that isn't for public comment, whether it's human resources, for example, um, uh, or personnel matters, for example, that are not up for public discussion or public comment. Um, or that by law require an executive session. I think they're, um, where it likely falls in the meeting is likely grounded in both the bylaws and how those meetings are run. Um, but it is, it is an opportunity for them to take votes and discuss openly, um, issues that are likely, um, personnel or other, um, confidential reason, for other confidential reasons.
I think, I think her question was where, where the executive commit, uh, the executive session? I think it's like in between, um, cuz you have the five o'clock, then you have the seven o'clock. And you think they could do it at twelve and then let five and seven come in and then we don't have to do executive session?
Got it, so it's, it's basically where it is in the middle of the meeting. That, that, there's also opportunities for that, it likely lives in the bylaws, it might need to be changed, I don't know. But usually where those executive sessions have to fall, there, there usually some requirements around it.
Cool beans. All right, well, look, I'm done with the, I'm, I'm finished with my questions. Um, I know, I think you got like a minute. Um, Rashad, if, if, if we wanna do closing remarks, is everybody okay?
Yeah, I, yeah, I just wanted to give, uh, Joy Treadwell, I just wanted to thank, I'm sorry, Dr. Treadwell. I just wanted to thank you for coming and participating. I know we had some, some email, uh, concerns between, between us. So I appreciate you, uh, following up with us and, and, um, making it work within our very tight schedule. So at this time, I wanted to give you five minutes to go into closing remarks. And, um, after you do your closing remarks, we're gonna turn off the recorder because we have a, we have a special announcement regarding the District Two race.
Got it, got it, got it. Well, first and foremost, I wanna say thank y'all for, uh, the opportunity. And for those of you who hung with us in this late hour, it really does mean the world to me. Um, I also wanna share that I'm running, um, for District Two City Council because for me, this is my forever home. Um, I have chosen this community and for me, it's about showing up for my residents in the same way they showed up for me. Um, I share that I recently lost, uh, last December, I lost my partner. Um, and it took the ambulance a ridiculous amount of time. It took them twenty-two minutes to get to him. Um, and so for me, I'm running to make sure that we have an opportunity, that that doesn't have to happen to anybody else. And so for me, James is not only held in my heart, but he is held in this work because he also loved this community in the same way. Um, I've got three big things, y'all, that are really important. And I'll start with in, improving our quality of life. I have sat on panels with each of these candidates and we all know that we need to have a walkable, bikeable, interconnected city. And I think that what we are looking for in District Two is not just lip service, but how do we actually get there in really practical ways? And so for me, I think about a couple of things. The first is, we've gotta make sure that we are not just building sidewalks, but that we are also connecting communities. Um, that we are connecting it to the resources that matter most to our residents, that we are taking care of, um, both our grandmas and grandpas, as well as our budding young folks who, again, are not signing up for a forty-year mortgage to make it affordable. And so what are we building to make sure that they're coming and they find value in this community? And that they also choose it as their forever home? I think when we talk about improving our quality of life, y'all, it is literally one of my greatest passions to ensure that when we build this new police, uh, the police headquarters and this, uh, fire headquarters, that we understand buildings don't change communities, cultures change communities, people change communities, policies change communities. And so for me, we don't have to wait for the building to reduce our emergency response time and make sure that, um, it doesn't happen again. We don't have to worry about what it means to not have ambulances or be thirty-six minutes away from any nearby hospital. What are we doing in the meantime? And so for me, we don't wanna wait on a building to ensure that our residents get the services that they need, but that we have active plans before that hospital lays its last brick, before this headquarters lays its last brick, that we are taking care of our residents and their health and their community needs, first and foremost. And so the second, um, reason I, I'm running, y'all, is because I think that, you know, South Fulton is bomb. And it is literally a great place to be, but we are in a region that we need to be working together. Um, so that A, we have an opportunity, uh, to collaborate with our other municipalities, with our state governments. And I just wanna make sure that what you can count on from me is someone who is going to build relationships across city lines, across state, uh, government lines, but also with our residents in ways that we are building a true, genuine partnership. As somebody who has done this public service work as an educator, relationships is genuinely my superpower. Um, as a business leader, my superpower is definitely making sure I lead with strategy. It is literally my work to go into school systems and help failing schools turn it around. And so that doesn't come by hope, it doesn't come by buying your teachers' mugs. It comes by making sure that we have a strong strategy, that we're tracking our metrics, that we're making sure that we're looking at every student, that we're developing clear and concise plans that serve our community. And whether I'm in Jackson, Mississippi, or down the street at Sandtown, that is my work. And so for me, it's incredibly important that we're building a regional partnership, making sure that that partnership does not exclude our residents first and foremost. And then I will also share, um, that for me, I hold myself to the highest standard. I lost my parents in, uh, twenty-two and twenty-three. I know that they are looking down on me. And so my level of integrity actually does not just rest with the residents, but it rests with Novella and Charles. I say that to say that when we talk about what it means to hold each other accountable, we have to talk about what it means to be held accountable for, to each other. Um, and so as a resident in District Two, there is no way I can be making decisions that don't serve you because that means I'm also not a part of this community in the way that I intended to be. And so for me, accountability means that we are holding each other to the highest standard possible. And for me, that level of integrity, you know, comes from my parents. Um, I say that to say, District Two, I'm asking for your vote. I know that it's important that we are building a single city, not seven little cities or seven little towns, but I would love for the city of South Fulton to be so interconnected that who we are and where we are headed is clear for every resident and it's something that we're all proud of.
Thank you so much. And, uh, Dr. Treadwell, thank you so much for joining us and participating and just conversing with us. We definitely appreciate the time that you've taken out with us. And thank you, uh, Ms. Wise for, for being the moderator. I, I, well, I just asked you a couple hours ago. So, so I appreciate you doing the research within that short period of time. So thank you very much. And I want to stop the recording.